Okay. It is January 21st, 2020. Good evening, everybody. I will start, as usual, by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And our order of business this evening includes our open session call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have time for public comment if there is any. Superintendent update COVID-19, assignment of superintendent to negotiate Ashland custodial and maintenance contract. Ashland High School Community Service Requirement. Ashland High School Athletic Eligibility Modification Approval. Ashland High School Reduction in Winter User Fees. Ashland High School and Middle School Student Activities Updates. Approval of Student Activity Clubs and Account. Approval of AHS Best Buddies Club Advisor Stipend and Student Activity Account. Approval of AHS Equity Club and Advisor Stipend. Resolution in Support of Mindus School Building Project and Public Safety Building. Assistant Superintendent Update, Warrant Approvals. Approval of Minutes. And of December 11th, 2020, December 18th, 2020. Exclusions of Gifts and Donations if there are any. Committee Reports of Activities. Member Updates. Action Items, and then we will move to go into executive session. Under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares not to return in open session. And then this will be regarding the Ashland Educators Association, Teacher Contract, Ashland Nurses Contract, Ashland Unit B Educational Support Personnel Contract, and Ashland Secretaries Contract. So as usual, I will take attendance and ask you all to just declare whether you are okay with the order of business this evening. I'll start with you, Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Mark Terry?
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams?
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here and yes.
Okay, thank you. And then we will ask if there are any members of the public here. I don't see any, but I'll say it. Is there anybody here who would like to offer public comment this evening? And then seeing none, Jim, it would be you now giving us the COVID-19 report, please.
Okay, thank you. As we mentioned last Friday, actually last week during our school committee meeting, potentially we would be having an update on Thursday evenings instead of having our Friday morning meeting. So, you know, to start off with that, I think I'll start with the data that we have and then I'll fill you in on a couple of things that are going on with regard to COVID in our process in the schools, what's happening. The one thing you'll notice is again going to Thursday evening, trying to present some of the data. We're relying on the state to get us data when they say they're going to publish it at 5:00 on a Thursday night. Clearly, they have not. Imagine that. The only thing that is missing honestly from the state data happens to be that our cases per 100,000 and the data that relates to the athletic teams that we could compete against. Other than that, we can get the data, for instance, our positivity rate, they send it to us on Wednesdays. So we have that. In our cases per week has been updated through 5:00 PM tonight. So Ed got me the data, so I was able to, you know, so in essence, we would normally be updating this about 6:30, 7:00 o'clock on a Friday morning. So there's a lag time of probably 12 hours, which we wouldn't anticipate a ton of cases coming in based on the trajectory we have. What you'll notice is our cases per 100,000 has dropped significantly this week from 71 down to 41. Our total cases for the week is down 54 from the prior week. And that trend is what we've been looking for, right? I mean, so we go back to the 14th of January, we've seen a consistent drop in number of cases in the community. The student cases over the 14 days, many of them occurred back here, back in January 11th, 8th, 9th. Those cases next week will be off, so that number should shrink. Our number of kids quarantined has come down significantly. Right now, we have 47 students quarantined due to our travel policy. We have 39 quarantined because they're considered close contacts of family members within their household. So that combines to about 72% of the quarantines. The remaining quarantine is, if you remember, last week, we had a pitaway room and a warrant room that were closed down because of close contacts and are deemed to be close contacts within the classroom. So those kids and educators are still part of that quarantine overall number for the 121 students. The one thing you'll notice as well is we have 13 teachers quarantined. Last week, we were at 16, so that number's dropping as well. I know it's been a challenge, you could ask Kelly. You know, sometimes when one educator at home, their spouse or significant other gets it, now they're a close contact and it impacts them. We're doing everything we can to teach remotely and have someone cover those classes, meaning basically monitoring so we can stream into the classroom. But overall, it's a very positive trend. If you watched or heard anything from the governor today, starting Monday, he's actually lifting some of the bans that he put into place because of the numbers across the Commonwealth are starting to decline precipitously as well. So the only thing I would say is I wouldn't think we would need to meet tomorrow. These numbers are not going to indicate anything other than where we are. So we maintain the same hybrid model of learning across the district. So I'll open it up for this part before I move into another section.
Jim, what those the students that are quarantined do to travel, should they be coming off soon too?
Some will, some Kathy will. It all depends on when they got back. There's, we have Audrey and our nursing staff put together a spreadsheet for each building. So a student who came back from a certain travel, when they come back on a certain date, then they're required to get their test after five days, no earlier than five days, and then we go from there. So there are some families who have decided not to be tested. So that's a 14 day period automatically. So it all depends on the timing. So our nurses do a great job, I think, you know, Wednesdays have been really important for them, where they get to spend time looking at those numbers, following up on cases that exist and trying to track down those tests of families who did travel. Because their families don't automatically just turn it in like they're supposed to. So our nursing staff has to go ahead and try to track it down.
Kathy, a lot of people traveled this long weekend, so there's a bump up this weekend too.
I see, okay, yeah, thanks Audrey.
Forgot we had a long weekend.
I know.
Me too.
Every day is a long one, or every weekend's long.
Audrey, I have a question in regards to the symptomatic versus asymptomatic that I believe.
The number's wrong.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not updated, Erin. Yep, I noticed that earlier when I was putting it together, I haven't updated it. You know, that 137, we have more cases than that as well. Early on, we didn't, we weren't, you know, we had some where we haven't tracked it fully, so we've got to go back and redo that section.
Okay, okay.
I knew you were asking to ask that one.
Jim, all right. Jim, was there anything that would potentially cause you to be recommending any kind of change that we would have to vote on?
No.
All I would see at this point is if something happened tonight, tomorrow morning, you would have to make a decision with obviously Ed and Audrey's input to do something different perhaps in a building because of a group of close contacts.
Right.
But from the perspective of whether we would need to meet on anything tomorrow, it seems like that's not necessary. I guess so, the question would be, is there anything relative to athletics that we would have to be talking about that might be informed differently?
Not at this point.
We're competing yet, so I know we're.
Yeah, we just started, today's the third day of practice, so, yep. But no, based on talking to other superintendents in their school districts, I don't see any any need to slow down that train either.
Any other questions or comments on the chart or the cancellation of our meeting in the morning, everyone's on board with that, it doesn't seem like it's necessary. And if things were to change, Jim could do what he's been doing when things have come up and make the decision. No reason for us to come together for that. Everybody go with that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
So let me stop sharing that and I'll just give you a couple of updates on where we are. Ed, Audrey and I had a really exciting, I don't know if you call it exciting, either of you, but really productive meeting this morning with the head nurse of the city of Framingham. And we're in the process of partnering and looking at partnering with them and a couple of other surrounding communities for vaccinations of all of our educators and all of our employees actually of our school systems. It's exciting. Our first step is to, my first step was to make sure that I'm finding out how many of our employees would be willing to actually have the vaccine and take it. We're looking at maybe having this opportunity during February Vacation Week and coordinating with, like I said, with the city of Framingham. I won't mention the other two districts because I don't know if they have mentioned it, so in there, within their own communities yet. So I wouldn't want to do that, but it's exciting. And right now, we've had 338 responses of our employees with 311 in the affirmative. So about 92 to 93% of our employees are saying yes. You know, we are willing and want to take the vaccine if you make it available during that time. Ed, Audrey, you want to talk anything more about that component?
You know, just, you know, it's not going to be just for the teachers. We've decided we're going to include all staff, including our bus drivers, crossing guards, things like that, anything that's associated with the school. So I've already reached out to Connolly Bus. He's going to get us account of our drivers who are interested so we can include that in our numbers.
So.
So go ahead, Jim.
No, Mark, I was just saying, one of the things, there's a, this is a logistical, you want to talk about logistical nightmare, right? I mean, Ed and Audrey are able to pull off the testing in a 48 hour window. This is a week long, weeks long process of getting this squared away. Just the sheer volume of the number of vaccinations that could occur, we're talking thousands based on the city and Ashland and other surrounding communities that would be involved. It's a lot of work and it's exciting work. I think our community is looking forward to it, but it's it's going to be, you know, a lot of meetings and organizations which Ed and Audrey are great at, so it's going to be exciting. Go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Yeah, my question was just curious, sort of trying to understand how this is working. You know, I had no idea how logistics were going to work. Begin with when the state said, you know, teachers or educators are in whatever Phase 2 Part B or whatever it was, yeah. But is this, is this a part of that or is this something that's different?
No, it's, it's part of that. The governor also today rolled out all of Phase 1 is starting. So that whole Phase 1 is complete. Next, early next week, he's going to announce when Phase 2 begins, beginning of February is what the indication is based on his comments today. But I think, you know, the individual we spoke with today in Framingham seems pretty confident that that week of February break is really a week that we could be penciled in, if you will. They have the capacity and will have the capacity for storage of the vaccine. They will help us order it, they'll be a part of that process. The tricky part, Ed and Audrey, I don't know if you agree, I think will be after the initial vaccine, it's 28 days later because they're going to be using the Moderna vaccine. And we will, because we'll be back in school by then, right? So over that 28 day period, it's not like it backs up to the April break, it would be in the middle of March. So we're, we will look at actually developing our own internal using our facility, whereas we are going to be helping add another facility potentially in the initial first round of the vaccines, we would end up having to host the second round in our own facilities and only worry about our employees to make it work. But our nurses would be the ones helping out. And Ed, today, a couple of parents, there was another meeting with our nurses and we're talking about vaccinations and there's a lot of people out there who want to help us as well. Should we need assistance?
Great news.
It's great news, thank you.
Anything else, Ed or Audrey, I missed on that front? No, okay. So I think that's, that's it. I would recommend, we don't have a meeting tomorrow, so Ed and Audrey can, they're never going to sleep in, but they don't have to show up. Show up.
That's a break.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. Have a good night, Ed, Audrey.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jim, next up, assignment of superintendent to negotiate Ashland Custodial and Maintenance Contract.
Yeah, as we've done in the past, and again, either you can say, Jim, go for it, or no, we want to do it. Typically, you've given me the authorization to be the lead in the negotiations with our custodial maintenance bargaining. And they've sent me a letter asking to start dialogue. And I'm not asking us to go into any details right now, I just want to be able to have the authority to start setting up some meetings with them for the future.
Anybody have any concerns about that? Been our practice so far? No issues?
Nope, sounds good to me.
Yeah, it seems.
Do you want a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to assign Mr. Adams to negotiate with the Custodial and Maintenance Bargaining Unit for new success or collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Aaron? Paul?
Aye.
Mark? An aye for me as well, and that passes, thank you. Okay, next up, the Ashland High School Community Service Requirement. Is that you, Kelly?
It is, hi, everybody. So I am coming to you tonight to once again request that we waive the community service requirement for our graduating class of 2021. As you recall, we did that last spring. We do have a 25 hour requirement. And typically, our kids get that done before their senior year because it is a requirement to have the hours completed before you can earn senior privileges. So that's an incredible motivator. You know, we started this year with the hope that there would be opportunities for students and that students would be able to find different ways to give back to the community. And as the year has progressed, have just found there's not as many. And they're not as easy to find if there are opportunities. In a typical school year, we start, we, you know, we looked at the last couple of years with about 35 students who have not completed their requirement. And those students get it completed pretty quickly. You know, we're usually down when we actually get close to graduation to five or six probably supporting kind of hours. Right now, we have 83 students out of the 213 that have not met the 25 hours. And 52 of those students have not done any hours. Or sorry, or less than 10, have less than 10. But the most of them have none. You know, we've had a lot of conversation with the counseling department, with our community service advisor, with our National Arts Society advisor, and again with site council. And I would say from the school staff side, we have all seen that difficulty in finding hours and opportunities for students. And are also recognizing the reality that the students, you know, either are virtual opportunities out there and ways to do service in a safe way. The students that need to still complete the hours may not have the resources and the support to find those hours. You know, the conversation at site council, a kind of, there was not as much support to waive this requirement. I think, you know, understandably, students and parents, you know, a lot of, a lot of our students have already completed their hours and have done a lot of hours and have been out there now during this time finding opportunities. But I think as school staff, we are seeing it from the perspective of knowing who who has not completed their hours and the reality of them being able even to find opportunities. So about 63 letters of students are not graduating term, at the end of term one. Term, and we always do include the community's first hour, so we'll be sending those hours, those letters again. And I think they understandably make students and parents, you know, very nervous. I have students that are trying to find hours and reach out every time saying, I'm getting very anxious about the ability to not graduate, but I'm a remote student, we're staying home. Kids, we're asking them over and over to please stay home and stay within their household. Brown said, we need you to go out and find service. And have you all lost me because I'm freezing?
You did freeze up a little bit, but I think we heard most of what you said there.
Okay. So that's about it. So I'm just here to ask that we consider waiving that requirement.
I don't, that's not a vote for us though, right? You're just filling us in and it's your decision? Is that?
Well, it is a graduation requirement, I believe you did vote in the spring.
We have to vote on a vote to waive the requirement, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay. So, given that, what do folks have to say about that?
Can I just ask one question? So, you know, Kelly, I know this will sound a little bit sort of maybe altruistic or unrealistic or, I don't know, some of the stick. That, you know, I certainly, I mean, I get where you're coming from and the thing that strikes me the most is we're asking kids to be careful, we're asking kids not to engage with other people. And, you know, this is a requirement that in some respects is likely to be pushing engaging in things and it's just difficult to find those opportunities. I get all that. But I also do think that there's a reason for the requirement. There's a fairness to the other kids who've committed themselves to doing it. And I'm just wondering whether or not there's anything that we could come up with like a moral contract that says we're waiving as a graduation requirement, but you're representing that you're going to perform a certain amount of service by, you know, by a year from graduation or something like that. And I'm not looking to really make it something that people have to worry about, but just emphasize the importance of it. It's something we believe in and sort of like an extension, but you're on your honor to do it.
We had a lot of conversation around that topic at site council and trying to brainstorm, what are some different ways could, you know, at least, you know, celebrate the spirit of service and what's so important to us. Part of our senior week has always included service and we do hope that that will still in some way be the case so that we can still make sure the entire class has the opportunity to give back to the community in some way. We talked about, you know, looking at maybe a letter writing campaign or something that all the seniors could do over the course of the next couple of months and somehow incorporating that. So we are looking at some other options to bring service, you know, it's all members of this class should participate in some sort of with the reality that we don't see them all being able to complete 25 hours.
Anybody else? Anybody? Concerns, questions?
No, I think Mark raised it, I think it sounds good, what Kelly is proposing and how she decides to solve it, so.
I mean, certainly, you know, it is a pandemic and that is the reality. And there are probably many of them learning some other lessons that we haven't anticipated before and perhaps even along the same lines of compassion for others and community and how it all comes together to keep everybody safe and so forth. And certainly I support you, Kelly, I mean, I'm one of the people and I'm on that site council, so I know over the years, I've probably said, even when there's not a pandemic, you know, that sometimes I struggle with how some of these things really should come from the heart and not necessarily be a box that you just check off so that you can graduate. I feel really strongly about that. But on the other hand, I do know that there are some people that might never have that experience, they're feeling of what it is like to help somebody if they're maybe not forced into the situation. So, I mean, I don't have a clear, I don't feel strongly about that requirement even when we're not in this situation. So I support you waiving it for now, certainly at these times call for that, I think. So it doesn't sound like there's anybody that's opposed to it. So if we do need a motion to make that happen, who wants to make it?
Move that we waive the community service graduation requirement for the current school year, current graduating class.
Second.
And then all in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy? Paul? Mark? An aye for me as well, that passes, thank you. And then.
Thank you.
Kelly, are you up again next? Let's see.
Yes.
What's the agenda item?
Academic eligibility.
Athletic eligibility, waiving the.
No, we're modifying, not waiving.
Modifying, yes.
Yeah.
And this goes back to the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago with regard to moving to the block schedule versus our typical schedule and so.
We already, you know, kind of pretty much decided that that's what needed to happen and we were just waiting for you guys to come back to us with some language.
So I know Stephen shared with everyone the language and it's in your packet as well.
Yeah. So does anybody have any questions or?
And he apologizes, he's not here as well.
Any questions or concerns? I think we all already showed support for that and it seems like you've put together something that works. And since we're modifying, right, we need a motion?
Yes, just for this school year though, I want to be clear.
And I think he added for just this school year in the, I don't see it in what I'm looking at right now, but I thought it was there.
Why don't we say it in the motion just to make sure that's covered?
Yep.
Who's got it?
I couldn't find it, I went looking for it, I don't have it. You know, anyone else have it in their packet?
Yeah, you want me to, you want me to just read it?
Would you, Jim, and then somebody?
Yeah, it just be moved to approve the proposed academic eligibility modification as presented for the 2019, 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aaron? You're on mute, but I see your mouth moving.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye for me as well, that passes, thank you. And then reduction in winter user fees.
This one you as well, Kelly, so.
Yeah, I have to, I have the reasoning.
Yeah, so the last I spoke with him though was he's actually wants to remove this as a recommendation. Is that what you have? That we're not looking to actually?
Remove this item from the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Kelly.
Stephen's recommendation was not to change the user.
Correct, that's right, correct, right, so to remove this, he's not. Correct, that's right, correct, right. So to remove this, he, he's not recommending any changes to the academic, to the users fees due to the financial constraints it would put on the athletic pleasure. After he did the, the work and the numbers, he wanted, he wanted on the agenda, but then today he texted me and said, he's not recommending any change.
Okay, so it's an item that's not up for discussion. We're removing it from the agenda.
Unless you want it to be a discussion, but.
Well, without the, you know, the information, I don't think we can really comment. So, well, let's take it off and if, if there's information that we need moving forward, we can put it back on. Sound like a plan? And then high school and middle school student activities updates?
So I'll just do a frame of reference. This goes back a few meetings. We had talked a little bit about student activities and participation and in person, online, how much
What can we do?
What can we do?
Get in line with what we're doing with athletics.
Yeah, and one of the things that I'm certainly recommending is that we have some activities that want to meet in person as long as we are following our protocols and COVID. You know, I'm certainly in favor of that. I think we're doing it for athletics inside, that I believe that we should be allowing our, our activities to be doing, having that same opportunity, so. But I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly and Dave.
Ironically, ironically, right after that meeting, Desi came out with their updated guide for what we can and can't do with activities, where they are still strongly encouraging everything to be virtual for non-athletic activities. But, you know, just did re, I, I think it came out just because that's when the state made the group, the inside-outside group size changes. So I don't know if a new guidance is going to come out changing that next week.
I don't think it will, but what I would say is those are guidelines and I certainly think that we have shown a willingness to move away from some of the things the Department of Ed has asked us to do. Did I say that politically correct?
Can I just ask a quick question then about supervision? I assume that when these clubs would be meeting, their advisor would be with them so that there'd be somebody making sure that social distancing is maintained?
Yes. Dave, can you give an example of one that, I mean, I know one in your building that wanted to, to be able to do some things in person?
Yeah, so one of the clubs that approached me was Michelle Smith and Chrissy Canistar, who's the drama club advisor. I, I met with them and they approached me and, and asked for the the spring musical to allow them to, to do in-person, do an in-person experience, even though it was going to be modified. They came with something, up with something really creative that they did in the fall and it came out great and it was really creative, but it only allowed to involve a certain number of students and it was just, it didn't allow them to kind of work on the things they wanted to work on. So we sat down, they really wanted to run the spring musical in person and they're modifying it, so they're doing a, it's going to be a musical review. So they're doing snapshots or songs from various movies, Peter Pan, Lion King, I'll, I'll miss some. But instead of doing one large show where they would have larger auditions and groups of people, it'll allow them to audition and perform in small groups because it would be a review type of setup. So they'll be there to observe, they can still have students, you know, wi, wear masks and, and adhere to distancing and, and then be able to perform. So they, they put a lot of, certainly a lot of time, effort and work to make sure that it's modified so that it can be done safely, yet they felt really passionately about giving students that in-person opportunity and be, be able to work all the skills that they, they feel they wanted to work on and be able to show off for, as part of the drama club review and musical. So we had a great conversation and everything that they proposed. It sounds great, it made sense, but, but it followed all the guidelines and I, I know that they're going to put some extra time and work into making sure that the auditions are set up in a way that, that, that is safe and can follow the protocol. So it was a great conversation and now they're really excited and looking forward to it.
Excellent. Well, I, I think the committee definitely shared consensus when we were having the athletic conversation for making sure that other opportunities that could be done safely within the COVID protections. You know, that there shouldn't be any reason why we couldn't provide those opportunities if we're willing to provide the athletic opportunities. So that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, that is great.
It doesn't sound like we need to take any kind of a vote on that.
No, no.
Yeah.
Sorry, Lori, I didn't know if you, you wanted more updates on what's happening with activities or if there was something more. I know that was the component we wanted to come back and reconnect on.
Well, certainly anything that anybody wants to share, but I mean, that example that Dave just gave, I mean, I think it checked all the boxes. Obviously, we would want to know. And, you know, you don't need us to tell you, but, but anybody watching would want to hear that, you know, the same strict guidelines that we would be applying to athletics or anything else that we've already approved would be expected, that there is an adult in the room that is number one, willing to be there and number two, going to agree to make sure that those guidelines are met. And, and beyond that, you know, I think it's kind of all or nothing with some of these things. It's hard to justify, you know, one activity being allowed and another not unless there's a real safety reason for that. My, and it sounded like that's what the rest of the committee was saying as well. You know, appreciate the opportunity that you can find for students within, within those guidelines and hopefully a, anything that you find is not working that you'll discontinue.
Yeah, we're, with athletics, we have the athletic director that is overseeing all those teams. So I would imagine the principals are like the AD, right, overseeing these clubs and the the, the adults supervisor or the staff member.
Correct. Does anybody have any concerns about that or questions while Kelly and Dave and anybody else who might be running something in their building? Is there anything you want them to hear? Before we move to the next item? All right, excellent. We're good. Sounds like
That's great.
About that. Thank you. Next would be the approval of student activity clubs and account approval of AHS Best Buddies Club Advisor Stipend and Student Activity Account. Who's that?
Kelly.
Kelly?
That's me. So Best Buddies formed a chapter, started working together last spring, kind of right before all of this happened. And I think we'd actually just missed them enjoying the fall conversation around this. They have been functioning all year, have been doing some amazing work in terms of they have their, you know, our students that I think they're up to like something like forty-five students had joined. They have set up their buddies, they're doing, you know, different online activities with their buddies and connecting and hope to keep growing. It's a national program. There's already a chapter at the middle school. So they hope to work closely with them and just keep growing the program.
Excellent. And do we need information, do we need to vote the stipend and?
Yeah, we need to set up, we need to approve the club, the activity account and the stipend.
Yeah, I did think, I do think I saw the motion and it, does anyone have any questions for discussion or comments before we move to the motion for that?
I thought we approved this last year or as a club or something, or am I thinking of something else?
I think you did it in middle school last week.
The middle school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It started last year at the middle school.
Oh, okay. All right, got it. That's why it sounds familiar.
Who's got the motion? I have it in front of me if I, if I need to read it.
Yeah, I don't have it, Kelly, sorry. I mean, Lori.
So it would be a motion to approve the creation of AHS Best Buddies Club and the related advisor stipend of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, ratio of point seven five, and to approve a corresponding student activities account for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So moved.
We have a second? All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark? Aaron?
Aye.
Paul? An aye for me as well. And then next up would be the Equity Club and the advisor stipend for that. Yeah.
So that is, that is brand new and something that has come out of you know, everything's happened since the last spring and summer. A group of teachers came together wanting to make sure that work continued and that that was a focus. Anti-racism was a focus as we started the school year. We did a book club and some other activities over the summer. One of the actions that we hoped to do once the school year got started was to bring students into the conversation and make them part of the activities they were doing. So since the beginning of the year, students, I think we brought students in probably in November for the first time and we meet every other week as a faculty group and then once a month, students attend those meetings as well. We really found a need because we were doing a lot of work and needed someone that would kind of, you know, direct that work, help guide that work. We have offered, been able, you know, through this group has brainstormed a variety of different activities. There've been other book clubs that have been offered through PD to staff. We had a movie night last and looking or planning a variety of activities over the course and guess on anti-racism and keep students as a part of that group. Currently, we have about fifteen students that attend regularly. We just had a meeting this afternoon. And we have a teacher that has been kind of directing all the work that we are doing and overseeing it and, and putting in a lot of hours that happen. We actually have a new name. We're actually the cares team now. We started out as the Equity Team. And now we are Placars Against Racism and for Equity and Social Justice. The fay is silent. And so we are excited for the work that we've done already in a, in a short period of time and what we plan to, to do moving forward.
Excellent. Any questions for Kelly on that? Comments? Concerns?
No, it sounds good.
Do you guys want me to give you the language for that motion?
I found it. I can read it, Kelly. Lori, I'm sorry. Keep on you, Kelly. I moved to approve the creation of AHS Equity Club and the related advisor stipend of one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Ratio one point zero, do I have to say that part?
Yeah, I think it means, it meant to say ratio.
It says ratio.
Ratio.
Yeah. All in favor, Mark? Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul? An aye for me as well. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. You're off the hook for at least a few minutes.
Done now?
Maybe for the night, I think. Next up is a, a resolution in support of the Mindes School Building Project and Public Safety Building. I was contacted by Steve Mitchell of the Select Board asking if we would like to be willing to consider a joint resolution with the Select Board on the two building projects that are going to be voted at town meeting on Saturday and then again next Wednesday. So we worked together to draft something. Jim, hopefully you have that.
I'm gonna pull it up. That's what I'm doing.
Thank you. That passed last night at the Select Board meeting. They passed this version and it's, it's here for us to consider tonight. And I, I certainly will take any discussion and feedback on that.
I'll share Lori on the screen.
Thank you.
Need me to do it, Jim?
No, I got it, found it. I was just there we go. And everyone, Lori, can you read that all right?
Yep, I can see it and it just indicates that these projects have been in the works for a while and that they are in the works because we have inefficient, unsafe and buildings that aren't designed to meet today's needs. And there's other language here that hopefully you've all had a chance to take a look at, but I guess what I'm asking you now, rather than reading the whole thing out loud, unless somebody has not had a chance to read it in advance, I'm asking if there are any concerns about anything in here, any questions about the language, any suggestions? Any comments about the need to do this?
Lori, I'll just say, I mean, I, I I'm fairly comfortable with the, the statement as it's written. I think also just because Select Board's already approved it, you know, we should really, unless we have real major heartburn on this, we should really, I think, take a thumbs up or thumbs down. Not to suggest the conversation is important, but you know, I don't want to get into kind of scenario where the Select Board kind of came up with something they were hoping would be a joint motion and then turns out to be, you know, a subtle difference here or there or striking a sentence out of a sentence, but, but I'm, I'm comfortable personally.
Yeah, I as well. I, I read it. I, I think it's, I think it's a good letter. It's a good statement.
And Paul, and given that you are a
I don't support anything, so. Well, you know, Paul, I was wondering, you've been kind of quiet tonight and now I understand why you're a little sour, so. Is it, is it, is it the twenty-eighth yet?
Right?
I know.
I'll move to, to, I guess, approve or support the resolution in support of the Mindes School Building Project, Public Safety Building.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. And all in favor, Mark? Kathy?
Aye.
Paul? Aaron?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. That passes. Thank you. And next up, do we have an assistant superintendent update?
Let you know that our professional development day on Friday was successful. Teachers were able to take part in the activities that we had discussed and especially happy that I think around ninety of our educators participated in the sessions regarding live streaming. So I was especially happy about that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. And then Kathy, do you have any warrant approvals this evening?
I, I do not.
All right. Moving right along. We've got two sets of minutes. We'll start with December eleventh. Anybody have any concerns about those?
I, I didn't see anything of concern.
Anybody else? So do we have a motion to accept the minutes of December eleventh, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul? Mark? An aye for me as well. And then December eighteenth, twenty twenty minutes, any concerns about those?
I did not have any concerns.
Anybody else? I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of December eighteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Second from Mark and all in favor, Mark? Kathy?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Paul? An aye for me. And Jim, do we have any gifts and donations this evening?
We do not.
Wow. We are cruising right along here. Member updates, does anybody have anything they want to share?
I do, sorry. I talked to you early about this, Lori. Ash, I went to the Ash Pack meeting the other night, last night or the night before. And they were asking if they, they have lighting the way and what is, they have parents nominate teachers and staff for those awards that they give. And they typically have a, a night in the fall to, to present those awards to the teachers and the administration comes to. But they weren't able to have it this year. So they were hoping that maybe they could come to one of our school committee meetings and present those lighting the ways, but that would be for the last year recipients. So I told them I would pass that along to the chair and it would be up to the chair and the vice chair to, if, if that was something they wanted to put on the So I told them I would pass that along to the chair and it would be up to the chair and the vice chair to, if, if that was something they wanted to put on the agenda and, you know, they could work it out. You could work it out with this Mr. Adams, so.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely, I mean, we certainly welcome updates from Ash Pack on, on whatever they want to share with us and that sounds great. Just Jim and Mark and I will just talk about the timing, I don't know if they had some timing in mind. Uh, but we can take a look at the upcoming agendas and see where it might fit best and unless.
Yeah, okay, that would, that would be, yeah, I was trying to see if they had a time in mind, no, I don't think so, but. You know, if you would consider that, you know, it would probably take up, you know, a little chunk of time in, in our meeting, so if you.
Sure.
Three wanted to decide where it would fit in best or when it would fit in, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else, Paul?
Well, so just to make sure everyone knows the important dates, I don't think it's. I don't think it's hyperbole to say, you know, we have an opportunity to, you know, biggest votes you'll make as a Ashland resident, in my opinion, so. Saturday is special town meeting for the two building projects, town meeting starts at ten, you do not need to attend the. Presentations and discussion if you choose not to. The moderator will hold voting open for a few hours afterwards, he's approximately two and a half hours after discussions end, so you can come down, just check in. And vote and leave. And so that will happen after discussion, so I would imagine sometime between ten and, or eleven and twelve it would start, but. That's not a set time, so watch it on, on live stream. That's incredibly important, and then we need also a vote on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. The polls are open from eight AM to seven PM. And we need, we need votes at both the town meeting and at the ballot, so I hope everybody. That, you know, has an interest can come out and vote in those, so like I said, I, I. I can't foresee me ever having a more important vote as a national citizen, so.
Thank you, Paul, and you may have said it at the beginning, but just, just to be clear, both the town meeting and the votes, right, on Wednesday are all at Ashland High School.
They are.
Okay.
Both at Ashland High School, both in the gym.
Both in the gym, social distancing will be respected and.
So, so one of the things that, you know, people have been expressing on Facebook about gatherings and all these other things and. I think people need to make their own choices, but I think we have overwhelming evidence both in our district and across, around the world. That any place that has a structured gathering like we've had in schools with protocols like we're implementing, like they're implementing there. Can be done safely, we're evidence of that and so are, you know, thousands and thousands of schools around the, around the world that, that are implementing these types of protocols and following them, so. Uh, I hope people feel safe in doing it and the analogy I say is. If you've gone to any store, you know, grocery store, hardware store or anything like that, then you should feel safe. I've been at, I voted in person in November, they did a fantastic job. And I was at last town meeting, so are you, Laurie? And, you know, they're socially distant, they're going above and beyond even what we're doing in school, so hope everybody is comfortable participating.
Yeah, I mean, I'll share, Paul, I went to the last town, town meeting, I've already shared this with you personally, but, you know, I went. Just leaving it open, thinking, you know, if I don't feel comfortable, I'm just going to leave. But, but I did feel comfortable, everything was completely a social distance, everybody had masks on. The space was wide open. There, the crowd wasn't something that concerned me and I was very comfortable staying the whole time and I'm not aware of any, any. Thing bad that happened from that gathering, so, so I'm just sharing my experience that, that encourages me to go again this time and.
For anybody that was there. You probably experienced the same thing we did when, for the AV that was there in the screen. It was actually very difficult to follow what was going on, just to give an update on that, so we, we do have two larger, large, much larger than that, but. Screens with, you know, better projectors that are built for that, built for that and there'll be two screens like that in the gym. Um, and there'll also be ways to, we'll have printouts of the presentations and we'll have QR codes, people can scan and follow along on their, on their devices as well, so. The, that'll be an improvement from the last time, because we are having two presentations on, on large projects, so that's very important, so.
Excellent, and again, you said it, but I'll say it again, you know, anybody who, for whatever reason, can't be there, doesn't want to be there. But you are comfortable going for just a few minutes to vote, that's perfectly acceptable and you'll have a couple of hours to, to get over there and, and submit your vote and you can turn right around and.
Just one question, I did. There was a point at which people could sign up to vote. By sort of mail-in ballot absentee, is that window of time passed or am I?
They needed to, they needed to apply and the clerk needed to receive it by five PM today. And then the ballot, after they get it, needs to arrive by the close of the polls on Wednesday, which is seven PM. So they can put it in the, in the drop box by then.
Thank you, anybody else have anything they want to share before we? Get ready to go into executive session, action items aren't any different than what they have been, except for we'll add your item Kathy for Ash Pack. And does anybody have anything else before I move us to go into executive session? Okay, so I will move to enter into executive session under MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declare. Not to return to open session, I so declare. So Ashland Educators Association Teacher Contract, Teacher, Ashland Nurses Contract, Ashland Unit B. Educational Support Personnel Contract and Ashland Secretaries Contract and I will take a poll to see if, I'll take a second.
Second.
And then I'll poll everybody, Mark?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, for me, and so we will enter into executive session, you all have received an email from Jim with the link. Not to be turned into open session, I thank all of you for being here again and all you do and we'll see.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Night.